Hello, everybody, and welcome to the May 6th meeting of the Select Board. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So just to let people know, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on local cable television by ECAT. We do have Zoom capabilities tonight, but we're experiencing some technical difficulties right now. So we are still trying to resolve that with the equipment. If that does manage to be resolved and people are in Zoom and they have a question, you can put your question in the chat and Sean will take a look at it, or the Q and A, I'm sorry, and we will answer that.
Recording in progress.
We won't be taking public comments during the interviews, the interview part of the agenda. And I think that we are right on to the first item. We have a timed item at 6:00, a public hearing. Restaurant 138 Incorporated doing business at Chino at 620 Washington Street. Determination of alleged violations continued from April 8th, 2024. If you'd like to come up to the table. Come on up. You could sit right there. So I'm just going to read some information. At the January 8th, 2024, meeting, the Select Board issued a suspension to Restaurant 138 Incorporated doing business as Chino for violations to the town's liquor license violation policy and alcohol enforcement compliance check policy for sale of alcohol to a minor. The suspension letter required the establishment to post signage stating that they had sold to a minor. They also were to submit their liquor license to the Eastern Police. The establishment failed to comply with both orders. Both actions were required despite the establishment being closed for renovations and was communicated by Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan to the owner of record, Turana Wong. The suspension letter was sent by both regular and certified mail, as well as email to Mrs. Wong. Assistant Town Administrator Dugan followed up with Ms. Wong via email, reminding her of these requirements after the establishment had failed to comply on its first day of suspension, but received no response. Additionally, Assistant Town Administrator Dugan became aware via an email from Ms. Wong on January 2nd, 2024, that Chino's current manager was not the same manager of record on file with the Select Board's office. He sent multiple emails to Ms. Wong, asking her to produce the paperwork necessary to reflect the current manager of record, but received no response. For the Board's reference, the packet includes documentation of the town's attempts to contact Ms. Wong on the above-mentioned issues. The Board is holding this hearing to determine Chino's compliance with general law, Chapter 138, Section 23 and 26, and Eastern Select Board Policy 36A. The hearing was initially scheduled for April 8th, but at Ms. Wong's request, the hearing was continued to May 6th due to a medical issue. Long Lam from Chino is here tonight. He confirmed his planned attendance for the hearing. Ms. Wong identified Mr. Lam as the manager at Chino, but the last known manager we have on record is Alan Yi, and the town has not yet received appropriate paperwork from Chino to reflect this change. So we have Town Council Steve Chaplin here tonight. Steve is going to, Attorney Chaplin is going to guide us through this part of the process, and we have Police Chief Boone here as well. So with that big introduction, there's a stipulation that's usually required at the beginning, or invited to be signed at the beginning, and Mr. Lam has declined.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually.
Good evening.
I'm stealing your mic.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, that is correct. We did prepare a stipulation. We did present it to Mr. Lam. He has declined to sign.
So a stipulation, just for people at home, is basically a listing of what we have as the facts in the case. And so we ask the owner or the manager to take a look at that, agree that he thinks those are also the facts, and Mr. Lam declined to agree to that. So now we will go through and we'll ask questions of that list.
Yes, Madam Chair. So what I would ask is that anybody who plans to testify in this matter, please raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear, keep it raised, please? Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
So, sir, please state your name for the record.
Long Lam.
And what relationship, if any, do you have to Restaurant 138, Inc.?
I'm sorry?
Restaurant 138?
Okay.
What relationship do you have to that business?
I'm the owner of it.
Are you a shareholder?
Yes.
Okay. And what relationship do you have to Turana, the president?
She's my wife.
Okay, you have Turana's authorization to be here this evening on behalf of the business?
Yep.
Okay.
She was like busy, busy, super busy, you know. A lot of times she got the email, she didn't tell me. I asked her, you know, but she sent me the wrong email. That's why I didn't get any mail at all. And I have no idea, like, I don't get this thing at the restaurant, too. Sean, that he dropped it off last, it's like last week.
Well, so, sir, I'm going to try to just help us all here, just go one step at a time, if that's okay. All right, so you were aware that there was a hearing held by this board on January 8th of this year?
Yes, I did.
Were you present at the hearing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, what was the subject of that hearing?
I took the six-day of the last.
There was a six-day suspension of his license?
And then I asked, I used that six-day to close down and then like to renovate a little bit and then to make a, like, have a meeting with the staff, stuff like that, you know? And I did hire a new manager for that. And only thing that I didn't get any mail on, if I know that, then I will turn it in, the liquor license, and they put the size on the window.
Okay, so, sir, we're going to get there. I just want to go back to the January 8th hearing.
Yes.
The subject of that hearing was a sale to someone under alcohol under the age of 21.
Yes.
That occurred last year.
Yes, correct.
And you do not dispute that that occurred?
No.
Okay. You were present during the meeting when the Board imposed the suspension. So you were aware that there was a suspension?
Yeah, for six days, I was there.
And you're telling the Board this evening that you never received a written notice of the suspension?
No, I got the suspension, but I know when is the, I talked to Sean. I went, take from the January something to the February 6th, right? Something like that, yeah. And I used that six-day to close out the business.
So I guess my question is surrounding this item of correspondence dated January 11th of 2024?
I got that.
You're familiar with this, right?
Yes, I got that, yep. And then I show up the hearing.
Okay, so in this correspondence, right? Do you have a copy of it in front of you? The January 11th correspondence?
Is that except one or which one?
It's dated January 11th, 2024.
Yep, I have it right here.
Okay. So you would agree that the third paragraph says, "You must deliver your liquor license to the Eastern Police Department at 46 Lathrop Street by the close of business on Monday, January 29th." Did I read that accurately?
No, I missed that.
But it does, in fact, say that, doesn't it? Okay, and
My fault.
Your establishment did not bring the license to the police department, isn't that correct? Okay.
Because I thought I closed down the business, you know, during that week.
So, sir, I understand what you're saying. I just want to make sure we get all the facts out on the table. Same item of correspondence, very next paragraph. Am I reading this correctly? "In accordance with the Board's liquor license violation policy, you must post notice on the front door of the establishment stating clearly that the establishment's license to sell alcohol has been suspended on the above-listed date due to the sale and delivery of alcohol."
Actually, I didn't get this one.
You're saying you didn't get this?
I didn't get this. I only get the mail that need to be here by that day for the hearing. But I didn't get this one at all.
Okay, so you're holding a copy of it now. How is it that you came to be in possession of that this evening?
He, Sean brought it in for me.
Okay, and you're saying prior to tonight, you've never seen that before?
Yep. The whole package, the whole package, this one outside by itself, and the whole thing is in here. So he brought it in last week.
So
If I know it, I would do so.
Question for you.
Because first two times, I didn't do anything with this. I know this is my violation. First two times, as first time is Amanda come in, and the second time is Hannah come in. They all, they all taking care of the stuff, so I didn't, I didn't, I didn't have nothing.
So you're saying, you're saying this isn't the first time your liquor license has been suspended, correct? And are you telling us that when it was previously suspended, you did not hand the license into the police department?
First two times, they did it, not me. I didn't do nothing with it.
Who did what with the license, the first?
Amanda did it, first time.
Who's Amanda?
She's the manager there.
Is she still the manager now?
Not at all.
Who's the manager now?
Right now, I just have one max.
You would agree that you haven't filed for a change of manager application with the town? Is that correct?
Because Turana did the paperwork. I worked for the kitchen, that's all. So I didn't know much about the dining room, you know?
So you weren't aware that to change the manager, that you need to file an application to change the manager?
Not at all.
When did you become aware of that? The necessity of filing an application?
The third time.
When?
The third time, because no manager there. And Turana keep asking me, you need to have a manager out there, you know? So take care of the
So I'm confused. As we sit here today, you were aware that the restaurant needs to apply for a change of manager, correct?
Yes. She told me that a few months ago.
Turana told you that?
Yes.
A few months ago?
Yes.
But the application hasn't been filed, correct?
I really don't know.
Well, whose responsibility is it to file the application?
Turana.
Okay, and you do not know whether or not she's filed the application?
Not really.
Okay.
Sorry. If I get, if I know that, I would do so, you know? That's why I didn't, I have no idea why I didn't get all the mail. So the whole package is Sean brought it in last week.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, Sean, it was mailed to the restaurant?
Yes.
Is that correct? So you're saying you never received, the restaurant never received it?
I didn't see any mail.
You didn't see it, and you don't know if the restaurant received it?
But lately, lately, I'm work for the dining room. I don't, so I hire somebody work for the kitchen.
Craig, let's let the attorney get all the questions at first.
Right, so Turana hasn't told you one way or the other whether or not she filed for a change of manager?
She asked me to have another manager to
Right, but I'm talking about the application, the application with the town. You told us a minute ago, you do not know, one way or the other, if that paperwork has been filed? Because that's Turana's job, right?
Yep.
Okay, so is Turana the one who opens the mail at the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
But the mail sent it to me and then I bring it to her. I bring it home to her, you know, but, you know, lately, I don't see the mail.
Okay. Have you seen these photos?
Yeah, that's I posted on.
That's the front door at the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
I posted.
Okay, sorry, we're temporarily closed for renovations. I read that correctly?
Yep.
It doesn't say anything about a liquor license being suspended?
No.
Okay, and it doesn't say anything about the reason why a liquor license was suspended?
Yes.
Okay. And you do not dispute that there was no signage posted regarding a liquor license suspension?
Yes.
Okay, you agree with that?
If I see that, I will, you know, post it up, you know, and
Are you familiar with the town's policy regarding liquor license suspensions?
Not at all.
Not at all?
Not much.
Okay, but this isn't the restaurant's first suspension, right?
Correct.
Okay, are you familiar with the length of suspensions for first, second, third, and subsequent offenses?
They did the job. First time Amanda did it, and then second time Hannah did it, you know, so
So you're not aware, you're not familiar with the policy?
Not too much.
Okay, but other people at the restaurant ought to be familiar with the policy, right?
I guess so.
I mean, they've been here before.
Yep.
Under similar circumstances.
I saw police come in and then they make sure that have the nose on the window, I know that.
Okay, but you're not familiar with the policy. You've never read this policy.
No.
Okay. Does the Board have any additional questions for this witness?
Not as far as the statement of the facts. Craig, do you have any other questions?
No.
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. You don't have any attorney with you, do you?
Not today.
Okay. We don't have any further questions for you, so you can, I would typically hear from the other witnesses that we have at this point. I know we have the police chief here.
Okay.
So if you could have a seat, we might call you back. Chief?
Hi, good evening, Keith Boone, Police Chief.
For the record, chief has sworn. Chief, floor is yours. I know you know how to do this, you know, what can you tell the Board about the situation?
So on January 30th, I knew we were supposed to have, when I came into work, we would have normally had the license surrendered at the front window. It wasn't there. I notified the Assistant Town Manager and just put him on notice. The license hasn't come in. I'll let you know if it arrives today. It never came in. Second day, we had more conversation. It hadn't arrived. He was trying to reach out to the business. On February 2nd, at his request, we did send an officer down just to take a look to see if it was closed. There was a team doing renovations in the restaurant. The officer that went in there, due to a language barrier, couldn't even communicate with them to try to determine where any of the management was to obtain the license. And that's when he noticed there was no sign displaying that they should have been suspended for alcohol. And I notified the, Mr. Dugan, and here we are.
Do you have any knowledge of any prior suspensions at this location?
I don't have the dates, but, yeah, we've had several suspensions at that, violations from that establishment over the years.
And similar conditions of posting and surrendering the license to the police department?
We've never had an issue with anyone not surrendering the license prior.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for the chief.
Do you have a question?
I don't have any questions.
No.
Clear. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to testify? I don't know that we need it.
Yes, no.
I don't think we, I don't really, I don't think we need anything further unless the Board feels they do.
Not regarding the stipulation, but we'll talk about the suspension?
Exactly.
Okay.
I guess the one, Mr. Lam, did you have any questions for the chief before we continue with the hearing?
Not at the moment.
Okay, well, you only get one chance.
Why don't you come back up here again so that you can be on the microphone?
I don't know what to say.
No, do you have any questions for the chief based on what the chief just told us?
Could I have a chance? Like, you know, one more chance, you know?
Do you explain to the Board, the restaurant's position to the Board?
I know it's a violation, you know, because I didn't turn in the license and then I didn't post the why, why, you know?
Yes, sir, the floor is yours. Go ahead. Tell the Board whatever you think they need to know.
I really don't know, because I just lost a manager and then I don't have a manager. But now I hire another manager, you know, make sure that everything, you know, back on track, you know? And I believe it or not, I did not see this kind of mail.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell the Board?
Could I have another chance, you know?
Another chance to say something additional to the Board?
No, like, I know this is a misunderstanding, you know? I did, we did close down for a week to take that action for the violation. That's why I asked, can I use that six-day to close out the business, I guess, you know? And we didn't open for the week, for the whole week. Only one thing that I didn't turn in.
I have a question for you. So if you're, you say you're the owner?
Yes.
And you're the manager?
I don't take paperwork.
Well, the owner of a business is responsible for a business, if you're the owner.
Yes.
So you need to, you need to make sure that your people are serving appropriately, which we say went, wait, hold on a second. We're very clear about that when we issue liquor license, crystal clear, because we are in a college town. And so you're responsible for all your employees, their actions. You're responsible for any paperwork that you get. This Board was overly generous when we gave you the penalty to close down for a week by agreeing that if you did it within a couple of week window, it could coincide with when you were going to have renovations done. That was very generous of the Board, because we didn't have to do that. We don't want to hurt a small business in our town, and we don't want to hurt the people that work for you that are going to go without a paycheck for a week, presumably. So for, as it was then, Sean, our Assistant Town Administrator, had to chase you guys to come up with the date. You were supposed to call the next day and resolve that, and it didn't happen like that. Sean finally got you the date, and
I called him back. I did call him back.
There were a few calls there. There were a few calls there. It was not easy to set up. It wasn't like you called the first thing.
I was like waiting for a date, so to get the people coming, renovate. So I did final call him like a week later, maybe.
We weren't waiting for your renovations. We were asking you to pick a date. If it coincided with your renovations, that was great. But it was your responsibility to do that, which you didn't do.
I did call him back and then set up the date, that I did.
Not the next day?
Not the next day.
Right, and that was what we asked you to do. So Turana is the one who we think is the owner, who we've been trying to reach throughout this time. She was supposed to be there at our last hearing, and as a courtesy, we extended the hearing to today to make it convenient for her to come, and she doesn't come again. Now, if she's the person who's in charge of all the business aspects about this restaurant, and she doesn't come here tonight, and she sends you, who doesn't know any of this stuff, that's a problem. It's a problem for us, and it's a problem for your restaurant. It's a problem for her. She should have been here tonight. The person who knows this should have been here. So we're, I am not inclined, the Board will discuss and deliberate, but you've gotten a penalty. We can't even find an instance of when a restaurant has violated the penalty by just blatantly not shutting down. You've had this happen before. So you can say you don't know it, but Turana knows it, and if you're here acting on her behalf, your leadership in that restaurant knows that you have to turn in the license and you have to post it on your door. You didn't do that. You didn't take Sean's calls when he was telling you to do that. You haven't updated your manager of record in years after repeated in writing and verbal conversations to do that. So you're basically just violating everything that the Board is asking you to do by laws we are trying to follow. So that's a problem. And so your violation was six days for the violation. Now we have to talk about what the penalty is going to be. In addition, you're still going to have to shut down the six days for the original penalty, and we're going to add a penalty on top of that, because you violated that. Nobody wants to be here for this. This Board doesn't like to do this, and I know that it's very uncomfortable for you as well, and we don't like that. We don't like to be in this position, but you've left us no choice. So the last time that we were here, two of the Board members wanted to give even more than a six-day, if you recall correctly. And we kept it to six days. We were generous enough to let you work a week that worked in your favor as well. So now we're going to talk about what the extra penalty is for that, and there's not going to be a choice of the weeks. Sean is going to pick the weeks. You're closed on Mondays, correct?
Correct.
So if we add additional, it will be plus the Mondays.
I'm going to change everything. I'm not going to let her do the paperwork again, you know? That's why I put in another manager, you know? Is there any? Maybe two days?
No. No.
Please?
Nope.
I know that I did shut down, I didn't open for that week, you know?
You shut down because you were doing renovations?
Not just that, I used that moment to do everything, you know?
You've been here too many times to plead that you don't know how to do this. You have, so. So what I think is a fair penalty on top of the initial closure is an additional six days. What do my Board members think?
Madam Chair, just as a point of procedure, I think we need a motion to close.
We need a motion to close the
At some point, to close the hearing before the Board deliberates.
Oh, okay, so I'll take a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move to close the hearing.
Second.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. We don't do this often, so.
Fortunately, we don't do it often. Okay, so what are our options? We've got multiple issues here. One is the original six days, which was given, as Dottie said, because we were being magnanimous about, because it's been violations before, correct? So they didn't, they closed down, but they didn't post things. They didn't turn in the license. Is that part of the sanction? Can we give sanctions specific to that, or only for the liquor license violation?
Well, it's a good question. Your Board actually has a written policy, which is great with specifics. I think you have a little bit of creativity here, because your policy doesn't explicitly say whether or not the failure to abide by the specific terms constitutes a subsequent offense. I think you'd be more than justified to read that it does. I did a little bit of research last week, and there was a historical ABCC case that I thought would justify finding that, you know, failure to turn over the license and failure to post would constitute an offense. Another place where you have a little bit of wiggle room here is whether closing down satisfied the prior sanction without posting and without holding it over. This might be semantics, but where I get a little concerned is if, you know, if you find that this, if you find that the offense wasn't served and needs to be reserved, then that would be six days. And if you find that there's now been a fourth offense, that's going to be a minimum 14 days. So now you're up to 20 days. Now you're up to 20 days. So I think the Board could be a little creative in its findings if they have a, you know, a number that they think might be fair, short of 20 days. But that's really a policy question for the Board.
Dottie, what were you proposing? Six days plus six additional days? Is that what you were?
Yeah, the original six, to do six days for the original violation, and then six days as a sanction on not doing the original six days.
So a total of 12 days for?
12 business days.
12 business days?
Yes.
Okay. And, okay, all right. I, the problem that I'm having is that the owner of record isn't here to answer the questions. So that's a problem that I'm having. But, and I hate doing this to a small business in the town. But we had this discussion the last time. We almost gave you 12 days the last time. So I don't see that we have any option but to go to six days originally and six more days, make it 12 days.
That seems fine to me, because it fits the third offense maximum, which is the 12 days, and you can't justify this as a fourth offense. I don't think it's other violations, but there should be some kind of punitive element for what I consider to be very serious.
When you own a business, you have to know the rules. And, you know, his wife knows the rules. She sent him here tonight unprepared. You know, they've gone through this before.
But I feel like it technically fits the definition of the offense. I lost a relative to drunk driving, so I take this very seriously. And, you know, it's, I support 12 days. Look at that.
Yeah, I'll agree with 12 days, but we have to pick the days.
Yes, Sean will pick the days, and they will be all in a row, with the exception of the two Mondays that their clothes will be tacked on the end. So Sean can verify those.
And I think that was generous response to this, honestly. But I understand it's a small business and it's going to impact
That's a big penalty.
It's a big penalty, but if someone lost their life because someone went into your establishment and drove drunk as a result of being underage and not being somebody who drinks, that's a huge, huge life-threatening penalty.
But, you know, I really
And you've had multiple offenses.
I didn't open for the week.
But you told us at the hearing that you were closing for renovations, and we worked with you.
I asked them, can I use that six-day to close out for the renovation, you know?
That's a huge, huge benefit that you got at the time, that you chose, whether it's choice or not, it did not happen.
I did not open for the business.
You know the rest of the policy. You've done this several times before. You know that you have to turn in the license, and you didn't do it. Sean called you the next day to let you know you needed to turn in the license. We get, there were two days of trying to reach you.
We closed the whole week.
You don't have a telephone that you reach or email or anything?
Nobody get to me.
Well, that's not.
And we did close the whole, the whole week.
So we're not going to just go back and forth and keep arguing this. You know, we're going to make a decision. It sounds like we're looking at the two weeks.
For me, that's a lot.
I know.
It is a lot. It's a big loss.
Well, the next time, you need to make sure that you know the rules and that you follow the rules.
Because it's much stiffer when it comes to.
I know. That was too much for me.
Very severe.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
I moved to suspend it for 12 days, dates picked by the assistant town administrator.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. I'd also ask you to please make sure that you change the manager on record, or we're going to have to bring you back in for that.
Yes, I will.
And I want you to realize that this board does have the ability to pull your liquor license completely. You don't want to head down that path. We've told you before, we don't want to see you back here in this situation. And I know you don't want to be here. I know, I can tell how uncomfortable it is for you, and believe me, I feel bad for that. But I feel worse, you know, knowing that these violations are continuing. So please let your wife know that and make sure that you two are communicating about what's required here. All right?
Also, what is the best way to contact you to understand that, to ensure that you get?
I can give you my number or my email?
Call you at the restaurant? Well, the email would be best. So we can, I'll follow you.
You can do that offline. We don't need to have your personal stuff on camera.
Is there a better penalty for me, please?
Nope, 12 days. We just voted on it, so.
And that probably has to be what?
Sean will work it out.
Sean will, okay.
12 days, we'll talk.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess before we go to the next item, just to kind of clear the air in the room a little bit. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right, welcome back. We want to start this meeting again with announcements and proclamations. So the first one is the reaffirmation of the select board's statement of values, statement of ethics, and statement of equity and inclusion after the election every year. We reaffirm these as a board. Unfortunately, two of our members are not here tonight, Jamie Stebbins and Mark Lamb. We do have Jennifer Stacy, myself, Dottie Fulgenetti, and Craig Bodger. And so the three of us will each read one of these statements. It's something that's important to our select board, and we're very proud to be able to make these statements to the public, and it's posted on our website. So Craig, if you want to start first?
Statement of values. To protect and enhance the financial health of the town of Easton, to protect and enhance the educational excellence offered by the town of Easton, protect and enhance the historic nature of the town of Easton, protect and enhance the professionalism of the town's staff, boards, and committees, protect the environmental quality of the town of Easton, enhance relationships and communications, emphasize long-term strategic planning, protect and enhance a climate of acceptance and tolerance within the community of Easton, and protect and enhance housing opportunities for the residents of Easton.
So that was adopted on September 13th, 2004, and it's been reaffirmed every year since. So the next one is the statement of ethics of the select board. A member of the select board in relation to their community should, A, realize their basic function is to make policy with the administration delegated to the town administrator; B, realize that in creating and enforcing town policy, the select board may direct the town administrator in setting priorities that affect policy, but the day-to-day operations of the town are left to the appropriate department heads; C, realize that they are one of a team and should abide by and carry out all board decisions once they are made; D, be well-informed concerning the duties of a board member on both local and state levels; E, remember that they represent the entire community at all times; F, realize that service on this board is service to the community and not service for personal or political benefit; G, abide by the ethics guidelines as established by the state; Two, a member of the select board in their relations with the town administrator should endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that will direct and support the administration of or the benefit of staff and residents of the community, recognize and support the administrative chain of command, and refer complaints to the appropriate members of the administration, give the town administrator full responsibility for discharging their duties, refrain from instructing or requesting assistance from town department heads. Instead, all such activities should be handled through proper administrative channels through the full board and the town administrator. Three, a member of the select board in their relations with fellow board members should recognize that action at official legal meetings is binding, and that they alone cannot bind the board outside of such meetings. Refrain from making statements or promises regarding the outcome of matters that will come before the board until after having a full and fair opportunity to weigh the merits of an issue during a board meeting. Uphold the intent of executive session and respect the privileged communication that exists in executive session. Make informed decisions. Refrain from communicating the position of the select board to reporters or state officials without prior board approval. Be respectful of other board members and their opinions. And four, a member of the select board in their relationship with town staff should treat all staff as professionals with clear, honest communication that respects their abilities, experience, and dignity of each individual. Limit contact to specific town staff. Questions of town staff and/or requests for additional background information should be directed only to the town administrator, town council, assistant town administrator, administrative assistant to the select board, or department heads. The office of the town administrator should be copied on all requests or correspondence. Never publicly criticize an individual employee. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the town administrator through private conversation. And limit requests for staff support and ensure that all requests go through the town administrator's office. Ensure that any materials or information provided to a select person from a staff member shall be made available to all select board members. And this was also adopted on September 13th, 2004, and it's been reaffirmed every year since.
And I have the statement of equity and inclusion of the select board. The Easton Select Board embraces diversity, equity, and inclusion as a core value of its work. As leaders in our community, the select board will stand together against discrimination of any kind, foster an environment that is welcoming and inclusive, intentionally seek out volunteers from underrepresented groups to serve on boards and committees, promote and celebrate diversity, champion equity, and cultivate inclusion. Welcome all residents to have a voice in community decisions. Create policies that recognize and value the needs of all community members. The select board recognizes that a thriving and vibrant community is made up of residents, businesses, and activities that include and welcome everyone.
Great, thank you. All right, so our next item on the agenda is. Do we have to wait 6:45, right?
Sorry, there's a reminder of town meeting.
How could I forget that? So reminder of annual town meeting, May 20th, '24, at 7:00 PM at Oliver Ames High School is our annual town meeting. We hope to see everybody there. There's a lot on the warrant articles this year, primarily the budget is something that's going to be of interest to people. And we also have some zoning that's important for us to pass as well. So we hope people get there early so that we can start right at 7:00, and we don't have to go to the late into the night.
Dottie, if I could just add, so we're trying something a little different this year. We understand participating in town meeting can be a challenge, especially if it's your first time. And so in addition to doing things like Citizens Academy, where we've tried to bring folks in and help build more understanding about folks' local government and how they could participate in it, we're trying other events to try to break down some of those barriers for folks if they want to get involved. So we're having an informational session in this room a week from today, so 6:00, Monday, the 13th. It's a more informal, just informational session about town meeting where folks can come, ask questions about process if they've never been to one. Public speaking is right behind death for most people's fears. So they don't want to go to a room full of 500 people and say, I don't know how any of this works. Can you please explain it to me? So we want to have, you know, more informal setting. It'll be here, it'll be on hybrid, on Zoom if folks want to participate that way. Have some of the department heads related to the key articles, you know, the operating budget, capital budget, MBTA zoning, CPA articles, as well as moderator and the town clerk. So if folks haven't gone to one in a while or have never been, you know, kind of just judgment-free zone. Come ask questions, how does this work? Why does it work this way? How do I participate? Where can I learn more? So that'll be 6:00 a week from today, Monday, May 13th, in the Corona Room, and on Zoom.
Excellent.
Fantastic.
It's a great idea.
And I think something else worth mentioning is that we've been really trying to improve our accessibility for people. So there are hearing devices available. If people want those, please let our assistant town administrator, Sean Dugan, know. We'll make sure that those are available that night. And we can't do open captions with the technology that we have, which means that when you're looking at the screen in the auditorium, we are trying to get the words to go across the bottom. That's a little bit more technologically sophisticated than we have the capacity to do right now. But if people do prefer to see that, the meeting is going to be streamed on Facebook Live and on ECAT's channel. So you could look at it on a device if you brought your own phone or your iPad, and then you'd be able to see the closed captioning at the bottom of it. So we're really trying to make those efforts, and we hope that that makes people feel more welcome and included. So anybody else have anything to add about town meeting?
Anyone who needs information, there's a dedicated webpage of all the resources you need, which is easton MA.us/townmeeting.
Excellent. All right, now we are on to the Easton Cultural Council appointment. So we have one applicant for that. This is a term that expires on June 30th, 2025. So I just want to mention what the charge of the council is. One second. So the cultural council, let me just, this is kind of long. Can I paraphrase? I'm going to paraphrase.
Certainly may.
The cultural council is set up by the state. And essentially what it is, is Mass Cultural Council gives communities money that they can take applications from artists and cultural facilitators, I guess. They, and then this council will take all those applications in October, and then they vote the funding out for these, for the applicants. So they meet a few times a year. It's, I think it's really an exciting committee to be on. It's not generally a heavy lift. Well, from my perspective, probably, they may think differently. I'm sure it's hard to look at those applications and figure out who gets what money. But we are looking for somebody that's very important, and it's a real part of keeping Easton a vibrant arts and culture community. So we need somebody else on that committee. And we have Mike, Robert Corradini, and he is on Zoom.
He's on there. He only shows up if his cameras on.
Okay.
But he is here with us.
So Robert, can you hear us?
There you go.
Hey. We can't hear you. Are you on mute?
Yes, I was on mute, and I should know that. I'm in IT.
We're not going to hold that against you. Thank you so much for being willing to join the cultural council. So we just wanted to learn a little bit about you and hear what makes you interested in being on that committee.
Sure. My name is Robert Corradini. Thank you for having me. Good evening, Madam Chair and Select Board. I am the director of IT for one of the largest biotechs in the world. Beyond that, I'm a U.S. veteran. I was in the Iraq War, did one tour. And beyond that, I've been a longtime Easton resident. Pretty much like came here when my kids were born and spent the last 22 years here and really not, didn't have really any time to deal with it, do anything within the town. And now I actually want to join and, you know, kind of be part of it. I've taken a lot of interests. I now live in downtown Easton and Northeaston and taken a lot of interest in really where our cultural, you know, impact that we've had beyond just the town and what Oliver Ames has done, but beyond, you know, for our country, you know, and the foundations of that. So that's really the interest I have in the cultural board. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the fact that you've stepped up to volunteer.
I agree.
Absolutely.
You live downtown, so you're familiar with the types of events and activities happening down there. And it's encouragement, you're excited to get involved in it, so thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. I live right smack down 91 Main Street. I'm friends with the Pyrees, which has been in this town for a very, very long time, along with many other people in this town, so.
Great, so you heard the description of what the cultural council does. Some people, including myself, for the first couple of years, I was confused at what's the difference between the cultural council and the cultural district. So the cultural district is a managing partnership, almost like a steering committee, that thinks up a lot of events, like the summer concert series and the art show that we just had. So the cultural district gets different kinds of grants, and they execute specific programs like that, whereas the cultural council is the ones that review grant applications from local artists. And they're the ones that vote on how much grants get. So the cultural district actually sometimes gets a grant from the cultural council for some of the work that we do, so.
Fantastic. And I'm familiar with a lot of that in my own processes. What we do, I do budgeting right now for a very large company, so I under completely get all that stuff.
Excellent. Well, we're glad to have you throw your hat in the ring, and it's nice that you do live in the downtown and you're familiar with the great things that are happening there as part of the great things that we do in town. And if somebody would like to make a motion to appoint Robert Corradini with a term expiration of June 30th, 2025?
So move, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, and this is a roll call vote.
Stacy Corradini?
Fulgenetti Corradini.
Roger Corradini.
So you are now part of the cultural council, but not until you get sworn in, so.
Understood.
You'll get an email from our town clerk, and you'll get sworn in, and they'll update you on when the meetings are and so forth.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service to the country as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next, we have the zoning board of appeals appointment, and this is contested. So, let me see. So we have Robert. Is Robert still there? Robert Corradini?
Yes. So just to clarify, and Robert is certainly free to correct me, but I believe in his application materials, he identified the cultural council was his first priority.
Right.
So if the board would like, we could certainly solicit. If he wants to still be considered for the ZBA as well.
Yeah.
Can we actually just ask Robert, can you just send us a chat of yes or no for the ZBA if he is? Can we actually just ask Robert, can you just send us a chat of yes or no for the ZBA if he is still interested?
So we have three applicants. So while he's doing that, let's, let's jump to the second applicant, so that's...
Do you want to read the responsibility of the Zoning Board of Appeals or not?
Sure, go ahead.
So the Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, and the, and Board of Appeals is responsible for hearing applicants for certain special permits, variances, and administrative appeals relevant to the town's zoning regulations. The Board is comprised of five members with two alternate members appointed by the Select Board.
Thank you. So we have a lot of applicants tonight, and we have a spreadsheet that I'm trying to follow and pay attention to, so I apologize that I missed that, so thanks, Craig. So did you hear back yet, Sean?
He rose, he raised his hand, so I'm just going to allow him to talk.
Sure.
Robert, you're free to speak if you can unmute.
Yep, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, absolutely. I'm definitely interested. Beyond, I'm familiar myself with a lot of the zoning laws in Easton. Because what I do in IT, we have, we operate in 12 countries, and I understand zoning laws in 12 countries now, and, and deal with a lot of these different types of issues on a pretty regular basis because IT kind of covers pretty much the gambit of, in my company.
Okay, great. Have you watched any of the meetings? Or are you familiar with how often they meet and what time? And it, those are in-person meetings, I believe.
Yes, I've watched a few of the meetings, yes, absolutely.
Terrific. All right, we, we have three applicants for this is contested. So we are gonna, we'll put, we'll put you back in the, in the box there, and we're going to ask George Hardeman to come up. We don't usually do this hybrid with some on TV and some in person, so thank you. We appreciate your patience for people.
Thanks for having me. I would shake everybody's hand. I don't think the forum will last enough. Please, excuse me.
So George, if you'd just tell us a little bit about yourself and why, why you're interested in the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Sure. I'm 57 years old. I live on Harlow Street with my wife and three daughters. I've been in town, I think it's about six and a half years now. I'm interested in becoming involved in the community. I typically involve myself in a number of different activities over the last, you know, 20, 25 years, whether it was when my kids were younger, coaching. As they got a little older, I was involved in some town boards in West Bridgewater, where I lived for, for a long time. When I moved to Easton, my kids didn't go to school here. So I wasn't really engaged in the town. And at the time, I was quite engaged with some other volunteer activities for the last eight years or so on a state level. Now that those have wrapped up, I have some time. And I'm interested in getting involved in some, some of the activities with the town in Easton. The Zoning Board of Appeals interests me especially as a lawyer because there's a significant legal aspect to it, which I think would be interesting. You know, I believe in lifelong learning, and I'm not a zoning lawyer, so I think I'd learn a lot.
Great.
And hopefully be able to contribute in a positive way.
Okay. Craig, do you have any questions?
No questions. What, what actually do you, what kind of law do you practice?
So I do two things. I have a law practice, and I'm the CEO of a credit union. My law practice historically has been primarily criminal law and financial fraud, financial regulatory litigation, and where those two worlds intersect. And on the criminal side, I do defense, and I do some prosecution as well. I'm a conflict prosecutor in several counties in the state, so I get to see both sides of it, which is pretty interesting.
And you're also now the CEO of a credit union?
Yes, yeah, so I've been the CEO for about eight, eight or nine years now.
Is that it?
That's it right now.
Okay, Jen?
I have no questions for me, thank you.
Okay.
So you know how often the board meets and...
Yes.
You would have no problem making those meetings?
I don't believe so. You know, you never know if something comes up, but generally speaking, I should be available.
Okay, great. I think one of the things that's important about the Zoning Board of Appeals is there's a lot of statutory requirements, so there's kind of a learning curve on that. And, you know, they, their findings are, you know, have to be written up and drafted and legal and defensible and making sure that everything's, you know, there's a lot of attention to detail on that board, so. So just, I think it sounds like you'd have no problem with that, you know, from your background.
I think I'd enjoy it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And we have, the third candidate is Norm Hicks. I'm not sure if Norm is in the room. Is Norm on Zoom? So Norm also applied for the CCAP. Oh gosh, I can't...
Climate Action Plan. Committee for Climate Action Planning, it rolls off the tongue.
Yes. So he, he is another one that applied for two. So what does the board think about the three candidates that we have? And you've seen Norm's information in the packet.
My preference would be George Hardeman.
Second.
Yeah, I think, you know, that, that committee really does lend itself to people with your experience and criteria, so I would be, I would be happy to also support George. So would you like to make a...
So I move to appoint George Hardeman to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a termination date of 6/30/2025.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Roger and Stacy with a roll call vote.
Stacy Hardeman.
Full Janetti Hardeman.
Roger Hardeman.
So again, you'll get an email from the town clerk. You'll get sworn in, and then you'll be able to start attending the meetings.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it's, it's really great to see new faces. It's hard to pick, especially when we have good candidates for, for, you know, multiple candidates and pick, and we can only choose one. So I'm happy tonight that we have other flexibility with other choices that people have put in as well. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is...
The big one.
Where are we? So this is the, the Climate Action Committee. Craig, do, do you have a description on that one?
So, Dottie, if I may, before getting into the interviews, one of, we added a couple of items here for the Committee for Climate Action Planning. The first one is just for the board to consider an adjustment to the committee's charge to add some alternate seats. Because since this charge was adopted and we solicited candidates, we actually received a pretty overwhelming response. More applications from the community to serve on the committee than there were seats, which is, I think, a wonderful thing. And so what the board has done, some statutory committees, like the Zoning Board have it as a matter of law, but what the board's done in the past is you, you could add alternate seats so that folks who maybe don't get appointed to the permanency tonight are still able to be associated with this board in official capacity and can assist with maintaining quorum if the other members can't make a meeting. So we prepared an adjustment to the charge that would add two alternate at-large seats for residents and two alternate builder and tradesperson seats through your terms. So that's the first item relating to this if the board would like to consider it. Prior to interviews, that'll give you the flexibility to seat more community members to the committee, if you so wish.
So I appreciate that explanation. And, you know, when we talked about this, we've had times in the past where we've had an overwhelming amount of candidates for a particular committee. And a couple of times, we've decided to increase the number of members, and it never worked out well. Because what happens then is it's very hard to achieve a quorum. So we thought that this was a good compromise because we do want to capture the enthusiasm of the people that do want to be on that committee. So by having alternates, they still have an official capacity, and we, we would be able to appoint more people on there, so. Do we need to...
So the mission of CCAP, the Climate Action Planning Committee, is charged with reviewing and evaluating town bylaws, regulations, policies, and programs, and make recommendations for strategies for including, but not limited to greenhouse gas emission reduction, energy efficiency, and renewable energy as they affect the town of Easton. CCAP's ultimate recommendations will balance energy and climate goals with economic impact to the municipal government and its residents and businesses. CCAP will take a comprehensive approach that straddles many board, committee, and departmental jurisdictions to coherently advance an energy and climate action plan. And CCAP will prioritize achievable policy and programmatic recommendations, and will take care to incorporate stakeholder feedback during the climate action planning process to inform assessments about policy feasibility and implementation capabilities of all involved parties.
Okay, so because we did amend, or we are talking about amending the makeup of the committee, I do, we do need to take a vote on that rather than a consensus. It sounds like everybody agrees that putting the alternates, reconfiguring that?
I, I agree. I think it creates an opportunity to keep the board moving as well, so we keep momentum going in a positive direction.
Okay.
So that's nine full-time people, members, and then potentially four alternates.
Hmm, what, I don't have that right in front of me, so.
But I don't, I don't either, but it adds four alternate seats.
Yeah.
There are nine full-time members. Okay, perhaps, so there are nine full-time, and it would add four alternates, who are obviously free to attend any meeting they wish. They're open meetings, but they can vote at meetings where the seats that they're alternate for are not present.
So, okay. Do we understand that?
Yeah, I believe so.
Craig, do you want to make a motion?
So the motion to add the, the alternate, alternates?
Two at-large for residents and two builder tradesperson.
Yes.
Either commercial or residential.
So moved.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Roger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous, okay. All right, so we have three people.
We have four, four people who applied for the...
Well, I'm sorry, one, there's a spreadsheet in front of the board.
One withdrew.
One is withdrawn. So you have two permanent at-large residential seats. You have three residents who have applied, Kyla Bennett, Lauren Model, Sam Simmons, and Ms. Model, and Mr. Simmons could not make it, but they would still like to be considered. Dr. Bennett is here for an interview.
And so Jacqueline White withdrew?
That's correct.
Yes. All right, Dr. Bennett, come on up.
Hi.
So we all know who you are. Probably most of the people at home know too, but just for the, for the record, if you would just introduce yourself, your name and address, and tell us a little bit about what excites you about being on this committee potentially.
Kyla Bennett, to Chickadee Lane. I've been an Easton, Eastern resident for 34 years now. I was on the Conservation Commission for six years. I was on the Gil Property, what do we call it, the Depot Street Committee for a couple of years. I have a PhD in ecology and evolutionary biology and a law degree with a certificate in natural resources and environmental law. For my work, I'm a whistleblower scientist and lawyer, and I deal with climate change issues every day. It's something I'm very passionate about, and one of the things that attracted me to this committee was the fact that it's not just, let's see how we can protect ourselves. It's not just a vulnerability assessment, but also what can we do to minimize our impacts on the earth? So that, for me, is really important, and I'm interested in, in joining if you'll have me.
Great, well, I'm glad you pointed that out because one of the things that we did want to do is not just have a plan that sits on the shelf. We wanted it to be an action plan. This is something that Jen had really been passionate about. And, you know, the whole, the whole Select Board really cares about this, but Jen really kept it, kept it moving and pushing. Sometimes it takes a little while to establish these things, and then we got the grant to make this happen as well. So Craig?
I don't have any questions for Kyla. I would, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you how much I appreciate what you've been involved in for the community, particularly with PFAS. And I have, I have no issues with appointing Kyla to, to this committee.
Thank you, Craig.
I couldn't say better myself. I think your expertise and your track record for what you do in town has been, just, it speaks for itself, so. Thank you.
Also, everything, everything, all of the above, so. All right, we have two more candidates. So Lauren Model is not here, just to confirm, not on Zoom. And Sam Simmons is not here either and not on Zoom.
Correct, all their materials are in your packet.
So we do have, let me just look through the volunteer application real quick. So Lauren Model, she is a person, a resident that's concerned about climate change and wanting to do her part to help. And then Sam Simmons, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through some pages here. Yeah, he works for a clean energy company for the past five years in a range of roles, including operations, facilities management, business development, and project management. He has a strong, strong understanding of clean energy topics and energy markets for New England, as well as a passion for understanding and mitigating the impacts of climate change in an economically feasible manner. I think that that's pretty strong skill sets for this, for this committee as well. So what are the thoughts of the board?
Do you want to do individually, or do you want to do...
Just, we'll do individually after...
I nominate Kyla Bennett for the, for the committee.
Second.
Okay, that's Roger and Stacy, and that's a roll call vote.
Stacy Bennett.
Full Janetti Bennett.
Roger Bennett.
Okay. Then we have one more, and that's with a term expiration of June 30th, 2027. And then we have one more, either Ms. Model or Sam Simmons.
I appreciate that Sam Simmons brings specific skills. I love Lauren's clear enthusiasm, and that's really important. And I think that there'll be lots of opportunities for folks to provide enthusiasm, but I would like to recommend Sam Simmons.
I will second that.
Okay, so that is Stacy Barger.
Stacy Simmons.
Full Janetti Simmons.
Roger Simmons.
Okay. So now we, we could appoint an alternate, and Lauren Model was not selected for the permanency, but we could certainly consider her for the alternate seat.
I recommend that we appoint Lauren Model as an alternate to the committee.
Do we do that now, or do we do it at the end when we have left, like, folks to kind of think about? How does that work?
There are only three, three numbers.
Oh, it's specific to that role?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, just to make sure I understood it. Sorry.
No, no problem.
Very confusing.
It is confusing. We don't usually have this many appointments on one night.
So second.
So that is Roger and Stacy, and a roll call vote.
Stacy Model.
Full Janetti Model.
Roger Model.
And this is for the alternate seat.
That's correct.
Perfect.
Okay, now for the commercial builder and trades. We have Norm Hicks, who is also not here. Is he not on the Zoom?
He is on the list. He listed the Committee for Climate Action Planning as his first choice, but he notified us that he's delayed by work today. So we'll try to make it, but we're uncertain if he will.
Okay.
His materials are in your packet, and Liam Thompson, I believe, is here.
So this is one, this one person, the commercial builder?
One seat, one permanent seat for the commercial trades, one permanent seat for the residential trades, and then there's two alternates regardless of your trade. So I believe you have enough options for actually perhaps everyone using the alternate seats.
So the, we still have an alternate seat left for resident at-large, correct? Does that have that, okay, I just want to make sure.
Some or many of the tradesperson applicants are also residents, so.
A lot of math involved in this. It's basic math, but it's still math.
It's a good problem to have a lot of folks want to get involved.
Okay, so Liam Thom, Liam Thomas? Come on up. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me.
So just introduce yourself, name and address for the minutes, and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in this committee.
All right, yeah, Liam Thompson, 16 Gawain Road. Really, this is something that I'm involved with from my educational background, as well as my career, is commercial construction for the most part, wind energy, and currently a construction manager for the Vineyard Wind Project, the offshore wind farm off Mother's Vineyard. So, you know, sustainability and, sustainability and renewables are kind of my main interest here. And this would be my first entry into, you know, public service and getting involved with my town. We moved here two years ago. We have an eight-month-old baby boy, and, you know, I'd like to see that the town does everything we can to, you know, focus on sustainability and, you know, energy independence for the future.
Okay, great. Craig, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I was impressed with the resume, so.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Jen?
No questions. No questions. It's just, again, it's really fantastic seeing folks with skills come out for this opportunity. And I also love when folks who've been here for, you know, a couple of years are just getting right into civic engagement, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I was recently down on, in New Bedford, where they have, where Vineyard Wind's headquarters, or one of their offices is with Mass CEC, and looking at the blades of these turbines. Amazing, like, I, I really couldn't believe it, and the way that they move those parts around on, on the dock is, and then try to get them out the channel, it, it was a real interesting experience learning about that, so.
It's an incredible thing to be a part of.
Yeah.
It's been quite a few years of wanting to be involved in this project. I got very lucky managing to be a part of it.
So the thing that I like about that is, you know, we're going to be starting this process now, but technology's changing as fast as we can even think about it. So this, the technology's going to be changing as we go along this process. So I think you're a great person to have on this committee.
Great, I'd love to be a part of it.
I move to appoint Liam Thompson as the commercial builder trade slash tradesperson.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy?
Stacy Thompson.
Full Janetti Thompson?
Roger Thompson.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And I didn't say it before, but some of you were here earlier. You'll get a message from the town clerk to get sworn in and information about when the first meeting is going to convene. All right, so now we have residential builder and trades. The first is Bill Humphrey. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome.
So please just introduce yourself, your address, and tell us about your interest on this committee.
Certainly. Bill Humphrey, 64 Old Forge Lane. I've been a resident of Easton since the early 80s, so somewhere around 42, 43 years. My business has been in Easton since 1985. I'm a builder by background. Built, I don't know how many hundreds of homes in this town, by, and roads, et cetera. But my concern is with what's happening so quickly. I'm involved with National Grid. I'm meeting with, I'm in a meeting with Eversource tomorrow regarding all the changes that are happening. Being a builder, residential builder, I'm involved with all custom homes, and with all the changes that are hap, happening with stretch codes, et cetera, and the changing of how homes are being built. My background is also excavation, road building, et cetera. I do basically everything. I also am a commercial builder too, but I'm coming here as a residential. And so my concern is, was what's happening in Massachusetts is being involved with National Grid and seeing how we build roads and, and with the change of things going to electricity. I have, my background is knowing what equipment is being built now. The problems that we have right now is a lot of cars, vehicles you're seeing being electric. The problems that we have is the electricity is there, the the superstructure for the wires are there for the electricity. The problems that we have is the transformers aren't, the transformers aren't being built. So I have a lot of background in involvement with that. So there's going to be a lot of issues that are going to be happening with the new stretch codes with, let's say if the new stretch code that's coming up gets adopted, what will that do to the housing industry? I can let you guys know how the houses have to be built to have that happen, and the problems that they're having in Massachusetts right now, in New England. New England is like with, for instance, you'll see if you have to get it down to a score of 42, and that's what you do with the stretch code, that's there. The lower the score, the better the home. So to get down to a 42, you have to insulate more, you have to change the equipment, et cetera. The problem is that we're changing so quickly, we're not seeing the problems that we're creating. So you'll see a lot of the new homes that they have now, people are using closed cell insulation, where it's a spray, a green spray that is, it's a type of urethane, and they encapsulate the building to help hold the energy in. And when you do that, you spray the outside walls, you spray up and through the attic. Well, the attic is not a conditioned area. So what's happening, there's tens of thousands of home, homes in Massachusetts right now, is they're building them very tight. The problem is, we don't see the issues that are arising. So now we have mold growth in tens of thousands of homes in Massachusetts that nobody expected. So we don't know what to do. So what should have happened, we should, should have had ERV systems in the attic. And now they're doing that, but they still haven't been able to invent a system to work there properly. So my concern is, and I want to work with the builders in town and with the town people here also, and with the building department, is how to go forward with this, that we don't go in blindly too quickly and do the wrong things that are happening, because mold is a very serious issue. So we have to, we have to be careful with which way we're going. I own some real estate in the town of Easton right now that is all heated by electricity. My mother-in-law lives there. So what I had to do, you'll remember last, not this past, went to the winter before, when we had that week of zero to five-degree weather. I had to move my mother-in-law out of her house, because unfortunately, the new electric furnaces will not warm, heat a home, even if it's over insulated, down to where it's comfortable where she can stay in the house. So we, I want, I'm involved with that right now, and especially with my building, the homes that I build in Easton right now. I score way below what the town requires right now, and I, I do try all the new systems and do a lot of research on them, so we move in the right direction. So that's my concern with the town, is building and moving to the future, but doing it the right way, being smart about it, and not just shoot from the hip and just, just let's go and do this, and maybe it'll do good for the, for the future of, of the world. But what happens if we start creating mold homes? So I know I'm being a little dramatic with that, but it's true, though. We're having issues right now with houses.
Well, I think that that was, you know, one of the ideas about the, the components, the people that will be making up this committee, is not to have everybody with the same background and the same ideas and the same thoughts, right? So if we're talking into a vacuum with everybody that believes the same way, you know, that's not good either. So I think that's why it was important to have commercial trades and residential builders trades on here as well. A few years back, you know, for my day job, I was on a committee with environmentalists and home builders, talking about how to meet some of these objectives. And it started off pretty excitable, you know, there didn't, there wasn't a lot of area for agreement, but interestingly enough, there were a lot of areas that we discovered that there is agreement, and it really made the conversation very robust, and it gave us a better plan at the end. And I think that that's, that's how I envisioned this happening.
And I have been on other boards in the town before, I was on the Conservation Board also.
Yeah.
So I am involved with the government of the town, sort of. And I have been on other committees, I've been on the helping of kids in town, I've been on the football committee, I've been on the Eastern Youth Baseball, all that stuff, but try to be involved with the town. I've been here my whole life, it seems. Raised my kids here, raising my grandkids here. So I love this town, and anywhere I can help.
Excellent. Craig, do you have any comments, questions?
Thank you for stepping up.
You're very welcome.
Jen?
Thank you, no questions.
Okay. And so then we have Jonathan Santillo. Jonathan, come on in, you've been waiting the longest.
Oh, whatever. I'm new to this scene.
So you had an exciting first meeting to join.
Yeah, that was interesting. Liquor license.
Just introduce yourself, tell us where you live for, for the record, and why you want to be on the committee.
Oh, sure. My name's John Santillo, 330 Bay Road. And, yeah, just trying to throw my hat in the ring. Been here seven years. Kind of want to give back. I've been building for 25 years, that's all I know how to do. Straight out of high school, basically. And, yeah, just want to, you know, kind of guide the, help guide the town towards a reasonable avenue to go, because, you know.
Bill?
What was his name? Bill?
Bill Humphrey, yes.
He said a lot of, you know, reasonable things. I mean, the, the people are making laws, but is that the right thing to do? We don't know. There are problems, mold is a huge issue, I agree with that. But there's other things, there's like, you know, I I didn't know about this committee until last week, and I did a deep dive last night, and, you know, there's other things like transportation, there's composting, there's many more things beyond, like, the building envelope that could be considered as a viable step that this committee can kind of steer the town towards, so.
Right. And are you a builder in Easton?
Yeah, I have a little shop in the back of my house.
Terrific.
Mostly cabinets and stuff, no?
Oh, good.
Is it cabinets?
Yeah, cabinetry, yeah.
Craig, do you have any comments, questions?
No, I, my son's a cabinet maker too.
Oh, nice.
No extra questions for me, thank you.
All right, well, thank you for throwing your hat in the ring, and we appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
And then the third, the third person is not able to attend, his name is Edward Horan. And let me just glance through here to see if he has any comments. So he is a licensed plumber and gas fitter in the state of Massachusetts. He spent the last 15 years specializing in the installation of high-efficiency gas heating systems in residential homes. He's worked with Mass Save, Eversource, and National Grid in the pursuit of offering the most advanced, efficient, and carbon-reducing technologies available in the heating industry today. He's also a member of the Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors Association of Massachusetts. He's been on the cutting edge of carbon-reducing heating installations for over a decade. His family has been in the town of Easton for over 130 years, and also being a father of five, he's very concerned about environmental issues and the impact of climate change in particular is going to have on our town and our surrounding region. So that's, we've got a tough choice here. So we need to appoint one person to the committee, and then there's two alternates.
If I, if I may, all, all of the builders who apply do also happen to be residents, so you have one permanent seat to make for the residential tradesperson, but then you do have, you have two building alternates and a unseated residential alternate. So that's an option if the board wishes.
So we could appoint one of these three as the, as the full-time seat, and then the other two could be the alternates, and then Norm Hicks could be the at-large alternate for the residential.
Yes.
Like theoretically?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question, just procedurally? When, if I, let's say, an at-large person is unable to attend, and one of the alternates is the voting member, how do you determine which one is the voting member for that evening if both are there?
That's a great question.
The way that we've done it in past, because I've been on committees like that, is just if somebody's missing, the alternate can vote.
But if there's two alternates?
Only, only one can vote.
So that you determine at the beginning of the meeting which one is the voting alternate for the evening? Okay.
That's the chair's responsibility, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Okay.
And just to be clear, I think there will be certain points in time where this committee does take votes. One of their first responsibilities after a kind of introductory meeting will be being assigned as an RFP review committee to select the consultant that they're going to work with over the next year or two. That will take voting, but a lot of their meetings, they will be, you know, doing listening sessions, they'll be reviewing plans, so I, certainly, an alternate's there, they're not, even if there are more alternates there than there are permanent seats, if they're not voting on very specific matters, then it should be not an issue.
Okay, so they can fully participate, just voting is the only issue?
Correct.
And that's pretty rare with, and less frequent?
It's less frequent. It's not, it's not like the select board where you're voting on 20 items per night.
Thank you for that clarification.
So thoughts, Craig?
It's a difficult decision. It's nice to have the alternates, but I, I think I would nominate Bill Humphrey, because of his experience in the town for so many years.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, roll call vote.
Stacy Humphrey.
Full Janetti Humphrey.
Bodger Humphrey.
Okay. So for the alternate, for the builder trades?
So.
We, we could.
We could put both of these on one end residential and one on commercial? Because Ed Haran does heating.
I think Teddy and Jonathan would get put under, they're both in their builder's trades, right? And then Norm could go to at-large?
Residential, that's correct.
Residential, yeah, at-large residential.
But you have two.
I'm sorry, I'm confusing it by using the term residential. When I say residential, I don't mean residential builder. There are two tradesperson alternates, period, regardless of type.
That's just.
And then you have one remaining at-large alternate.
And that could go to the, to the first?
To Mr. Hicks.
The first group.
Yep, so Teddy and Jonathan have to be the at-large, sorry, the builder's alternative, alternates.
Right.
Yeah.
If that's, if that's what you want, if you wanted Mr. Hicks to be one of them, it sounds like what you're, what you're leaning towards is Horan and Santillo for the two builder trades alternatives.
I, I would make that motion, yes.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy?
So.
So you'd say yes for the Slate of Horan and Santillo as the two, two alternates?
Stacy Slate.
Full Janetti Slate?
Roger Slate.
And then going back to the first part, we could nominate Norm Hicks to be on the at-large altern, alternate?
At-large for the?
Alternate for?
For the residential?
For the residential.
I wish they would have been here, so I could ask a few questions.
If you look up here, he'd basically be moving to this slot in here for this cluster, the at-large alternate.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
What's that?
Want to make that motion?
Yes, I move to nominate Norm Hicks for the at-large alternate.
I'll second that.
So that's Stacy and Bodger?
Stacy Hicks.
Full Janetti Hicks?
Bodger Hicks.
Okay. Did we miss anybody, anything? I think we got everyone.
You need to make some of your own appointments amongst yourselves, but that's it for the citizen volunteers.
Okay. Just want to say thank you. Really excited about the interest in this. I think it's going to be a really, really, well, it's already an important topic for us, but I'm glad that Easton's going to be one of the communities at the forefront of developing this kind of a plan. I looked around to see what other communities were doing it, when I was looking at what the charge was, to kind of compare it, and there's not a lot of other, other towns doing this. So we're going to be cutting edge and really excited to see how this plays out. So thank you, everybody. And you'll, you'll hear from the town clerk.
All right, good evening.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So which one of our Select Board members wants to be the Select Board representative on this one?
Jen Stacy does. This is right up, right up her alley, you know? I think that would be, she'd be a perfect member.
I would be happy to take this on. I, you know, I'm passionate about this. It dovetails with work I've done in the past at Harvard, for the city of Quincy, so it's exciting to me.
Yep, and I think there's probably some family members of yours that will be excited about it, too.
Yes.
I move that we appoint Jen Stacy as the Select Board Representative to the Climate Action Planning Committee.
And I'll second that, so that's Bodger and Full Janetti, and we'll start with the vote. Craig, if you want to start?
Bodger, Stacy.
Full Janetti, Stacy.
Stacy, Stacy.
Great, and thank you, we appreciate you doing this. You know, one thing I do want to mention about these committees, for people at home, they're big-time commitments. People think that we're just here every other week for a few hours at a Select Board meeting. There's a lot of work that goes on behind that for the whole committee, the whole board, and when you're on these extra committees, and many of us are on more than one committee officially, and even more than that unofficially for some of the other things that we do in town, and we know that that's a big commitment, so I just want to, you know, call that out and, and be grateful for you to take that on.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Excellent. All right, where are we now? We have to do the Town Administrator Designee? Do we have to vote on that, or is that?
The Select Board doesn't have to vote on it, I'm able to make the appointment. So this is more of just a formality of me acknowledging that I'm appointing Assistant Town Administrator Sean Dugan on my behalf. Sean comes with experience from other communities working in this space, and was something he was excited about right out of the gate, and one of the reasons we selected him as the Assistant Town Administrator, so I have a lot of confidence in his ability, and I think he'll do a great job on the committee.
Excellent. Great choice.
Looking forward to it.
All right. Okay, let's skip down to item seven, which is the road closure. Hold on, let me get my, get myself, get my bearings here. All right, so we have a road closure request for the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony. On Monday, May 27th, at 10:00 a.m., the town of Easton will observe Memorial Day with a parade on Depot Street and a ceremony at the Civil War Memorial. Director of Health and Community Services Kristen Kennedy is requesting the road closure from Church Street to Depot Street, to Depot Street to Center Street. The route will also necessitate the closure of Porter Street at Center, Purchase Street and Depot Street, and Church Street at Purchase Street. Say that five times fast. At the conclusion of the parade, parade vehicles will turn north onto Center Street, and Depot West bound can be reopened at that time. The closure is requested from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Church Street will be reopened once the parade kicks off. So you want to tell us a little bit about?
For about the past month or so, I've been working with, meeting and working with Teresa Podenco-Pool from the American Legion, and Steve Shaw from the VFW to get the ball rolling for our Memorial Day Parade. We have, they've made the determination, they have voiced an opinion that they would like to return to this, which is the historic route that was taken for the Memorial Day Parade, starting at the Old Burial Ground and the, I knew I was going to forget it. The Cynthia Drake Burial Ground, which originally were one burial ground that Cynthia Drake Road ran through, on Cynthia Drake Road, which now does not exist. But when it was divided by Church Street, they became the Old Burial Ground and the Cynthia Drake Burial Ground. My little history tidbit for the day. They're going to kick off from there with a musical selection by the Oliver Ames Marching Band, and hopefully a dedication by one of our local clergy members, and then proceed down. and hopefully a dedication by one of our local clergy members, and then proceed down the longer route. It will be 1.25 miles for the route, a little bit longer than the nine-tenths of a mile for the Veterans Day Parade. So there will be, we're looking forward to a lot more antique cars utilized in this parade to transport some of our older veterans as we make our way to the area of the Civil War Memorial for the ceremony. At the conclusion of the ceremony, we will have a portage on food truck and opportunities to socialize and potentially hear even some more speakers at the old center school property.
So this is going to be the first time that we're actually going to be able to reflect on the monument in its new position, right?
Well, we did the Juneteenth, the dedication.
Right, but for the Memorial Day Parade?
Yeah, but for the Memorial Day Parade, yes.
That's exciting.
It'll be the first time it's utilized for this, so.
In all the years of going to that parade, I've never, like, really taken a deep look, you know, because there's a lot going on and everything, so I'm excited to see that.
It'll be a nice opportunity to highlight, and actually highlight some of the historic burials and internments that have happened at those two burial grounds. So we have Korean War vets there, we have World War II, World War I, as well as Vietnam vets that are interned at the actual beginning of the parade as well.
Oh, wow.
Tomorrow, I will be meeting and introducing our new Veteran Service Officer, Jason Snyder, who started today, to the parade committee, as well as the leadership from Public Safety and Public Works to discuss all the little details. So that's all set to happen tomorrow.
Okay, great. Craig, any comments, questions?
Oh, I think it's great.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing this new changed structure for it.
I think one of the things that I like a lot about the parade, too, is there's so many young people involved, and the kids, and they're all, it just never ceases to amaze me how, I don't want to say well-behaved, but like, they're really paying attention, and they're really interested, and I know that that means a lot to the veterans as well, so encouraging families to attend, and all ages, and it sounds like a lot of fun with the food trucks afterwards, too.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Should be a good time.
All right, Craig?
I move to approve the road closure request for the Memorial Day Parade Ceremony on Monday, May 27th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to noon time.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, and the next one is discussion and vote nomination of the town's representative to Old Colony Elder Services' Board of Directors, Tracy Levine, Deputy Director of Health and Community Services, Financial and Veteran Services. So every year, we get asked for the nomination of somebody to be working with Old Colony Elder Services on their Board of Directors. They're a wonderful organization and a really good partner to the town of Easton.
Yeah.
So, I think she's an excellent choice.
Yes, this marks a shift. The seat had historically been held by Joe Pitti, our community engagement and programming deputy director. Upon review of the more recent agendas, it seems like Tracy might be a better fit to actually be able to implement and execute some of the things that Old Colony is discussing at these meetings, so we're making a change.
Okay, great.
Proposing to make a change.
Yep.
So I move to appoint Tracy Levine to the nomination as the town's representative of the Old Colony Elder Service Board of Directors.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Great. Thank you for being here tonight.
Of course. Thank you, Kristen.
All right, and next we have the vote for a road closure. Oliver Ames High School Graduation Ceremony is on June 1st. The Principal Kelly Kavanaugh submitted the annual request for road closings in conjunction with the Oliver Ames High School Graduation Ceremony scheduled for Saturday, June 1st. Saturday? Usually, I thought they were on Sundays. Saturday, June 1st, 2024. The specific road closure request is as follows. Road closures from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. The affected streets would be Park Street from Hayward Street to Sheridan Street, and Sheridan Street from Daly Avenue to Coughlin Road. Police, fire, and DPW have been notified of the request and have no concerns. Chief Boone noted that several police details have been arranged.
I move to approve the road closure for the Oliver Ames High School Graduation Ceremony on June 1st, 2024.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? And congratulations to the class of 2024. It's going to be an exciting weekend. All right, next, the May 2024 Annual Town Meeting Review and Signing of the Warrant. So, Connor?
Thank you, Dottie. This is the last night of the board's review of the annual town meeting warrant. We started a couple of months ago. There are two relatively minor articles in the scheme of the warrant. Article five is the supplemental budget for the existing fiscal year 2024. So, as has been put in the final draft in the explanation, there's two items here. One is a $6,000 supplement to the existing fire department budget for grant matching funds. Those will be matching funds for a federal grant for department-wide training to participate in, and then an increase of $39,000 to the solid waste and recycling budget related to increased subscribers, as with any enterprise fund that is offset by commensurate fees that are charged to the new subscribers.
Okay.
So I would ask for the board to consider a vote to include and recommend.
Any comments, questions?
I move to include and recommend Article five.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. And then Article 15, we've included in the slate of CPA articles. This is a, an article that would authorize the select board to negotiate and accept any easements, temporary or permanent, that may end up necessary from a construction of improvements at the intersection of Foundry and Piquanica, specifically for the redevelopment of Swift's Park. So this is immediately after Article 14, which would be construction funding for the Swift's Park, so, so long as voters agree with the recommendation of all the boards and approve that funding, the next article would empower the select board, as is standard procedure, to accept any easements that may be necessary. The Planning Department and the Swift's Park Steering Committee have already been in communication with the immediate abutters, and they're working through the finer details there, but because town meeting has to grant the ability for the select board to accept it, we wanted to be proactive, put the summer warrant now, so that if they finalize that in the next month, they're not waiting till November or October for a fall town meeting. So I would ask-
That's good.
-that the board vote to include and recommend. This language has been reviewed by town council.
And they, there's been a conversation about the specifics of the pieces of property?
That's my understanding. They're still working out the exact delineations, which is why there's not a specific plan, so that's why this is just a more broad article that authorizes the board to negotiate and accept those in the interest of the town.
I move to accept and include Article 15.
Second.
To, to recommend and include?
I'm sorry, recommend and include.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Great.
And then although it's a bit of a formality, we always like, just for the record, to be clean, that we ask the board, following your complete review, which you've now done, to take a motion to sign the warrant, and we will get it distributed and posted with the constables, online, and all those good places.
Okay, Craig?
So I'll move, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
All right, on item 11, we have an acceptance of a resignation, Elizabeth Reichman, from the Library Board of Directors. The term expiration is June 30th, 2024. I want to thank Libby Reichman for her excellent work on the Board of Directors. She also served on the Board of Health for a few years, and she's been a real contributor to our community, so we just want to express our thanks to her.
Unfortunately, she and her husband are moving to, moving out of town. She's unfortunate.
Bad for us.
So we are going to have to take a vote, and a roll call vote, to accept the resignation, so can I get a motion, Craig?
I move to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Reichman from the Library Board of Directors.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, and a roll call vote?
Stacy Reichman.
Full Janetti Reichman?
Bodger Reichman.
All right, excellent, and thank you for your service. Acceptance of minutes, April 24th, 2024, April 25th, 2024, and executive session minutes, April 8th, 2024.
So I'll move, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator notes?
I'd like to acknowledge DPW and the Water Division. This weekend started the National Drinking Water Week, which is a program that's been being celebrated in the United States for 40 or more years now, that recognizes and appreciates public works professionals, particularly those in the water sector of public works who treat and distribute water around the United States. We had an awesome open house yesterday at the Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant, which is one of four major construction projects that DPW Water Division have led. They have now completed 27 million in water treatment improvements in the past four years. Direct Field is first-rate, as everyone on the board knows, and Water Operations Manager Rich Tierney and his whole team are really exceptional. They do a great job every day, 365 days a year, and a lot of folks from the community came out, which was nice. The weather held out enough so that it wasn't raining on all of us, and it's really a pretty spectacular facility. I know ECAT filmed it, so it'll be available for the public who were not able to make it that day to see it, but we're just very fortunate to have the staff and the folks that we have here. We're also obviously fortunate to have the voters who have repeatedly stepped up and supported the capital necessary for these important projects. So it was a really great day, and thank you to Easton Public Works and everyone around the country who serves in that capacity.
Well said. It was a great day.
It was a good day, yeah.
Awesome. Assistant Town Administrator notes?
Yes, thank you, Dottie. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize our town administrator, Connor Reed, for being included on the ELGL, which is Emerging, or Engaging Local Government Leaders. It's a professional association of local government leaders from all different, all different components of local government, not just managers, but everyone in between. And he was included on the list of 101 honorees, 100 humans, and one dog that were, that were named as a local government influencer for 2024. It is a recognition that honors people in their communities that make a contribution to both our communities and the local government industry, for lack of better words, at large. And it's someone that demonstrates the ELGL values of joy, creativity, connection, dependability, and equity through their work in public activities, and I could think of no one that meets those qualities better than Connor, as referenced by our, the great team that we have here. That is in no small part due to his leadership, and we want to thank him for that and recognize him for being recognized this year by ELGL.
Congratulations.
Yes, that's excellent.
Well deserved.
Are we going to have a press release for that?
I would prefer, I would prefer not. I tried to tell Sean not to acknowledge it tonight, so.
I think that it's important to acknowledge that. I don't want other towns to see it, so could we make it private?
Turn off comments. No, I very much appreciate it, so thank you all.
Well, well deserved, and thank you for, for making the nomination, Sean.
Sure.
I do want to hear about the dog, though.
I know, me too. I actually don't know about-
You're awesome, Connor, but-
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's a good thing, but it's on the list with me, but, well, there are 100 other humans, so that's-
That's good. Let's get him in good company.
Select Board notes?
I enjoyed the, the open house and the ribbon cutting as well. It was impressive to see all the folks that turned out, and I want to, I think I want to echo what Connor had to say about the people in this town who stepped up and approved 27 million dollar projects for, for the two, three PFAS plants and the iron and magnesium plant on Red Mill Road.
Jen?
I think it's been a while. This is the first, like, regular select board meeting since the election for me, because we have a joint meeting, so I just wanted to thank all the, the clerk's office and everyone involved, the DPW, the police department, everybody involved in the election process this year, from start to finish. It's, it's a tremendous undertaking, and thank the residents of Easton for having the confidence in giving us opportunity again for another three years. So, thank you.
That's excellent. We're happy that you're back.
Yeah. We're very happy that you're back, yes.
Happy to be here.
And just to, just to make another comment about the PFAS treatment plants and, and the water treatment facility, you know, we see these things, we talk about them, they're kind of hypothetical, and, you know, we see plans and so forth, but when you show up on that day when it's all built, it's really awesome, and I'm so glad that we're a community that's leading our, our efforts and our demands for safe water in our community. And water is, you know, a resource that we take for granted. There's many parts of the world that don't have clean water, so water conservation is especially important. I know not everybody loves that, but I think it's really important, because for generations down the road, we have plenty of water right now, and it's, it's good and clean, but we need to always be thinking in that direction, so. All right, well, last is, we're going to have an executive session under purpose six of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property of land situated at 388 Depot Street, and that is, the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So I'm going to ask for a motion, a second, and a roll call vote to enter into executive session, not to return to open session, and then a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So I'll move, Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy?
Is it a roll call?
Yes.
Stacy, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bodger, yes.
And then a motion to adjourn the regular select board meeting? We don't have to do that?
You do not need to do that. You clearly stated in your motion going into executive session that you will not be returning to open session.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Joe from ECAT. We appreciate the great service that we get from ECAT. They're always here for us, not just at our board meetings, but everything in town, so we appreciate you. Have a good night, everyone.